All right, everybody. Good evening. It's my clock shows six o'clock on the news. We're going to get started. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Delray Oaks City Council. Today is Tuesday, October 26th, and it is six o'clock. Karen, could you please do roll call?
Councilmember Shirley?
Here.
Councilmember Donaldson?
Here.
Councilmember Gagliotti?
Here.
Vice Mayor Lintel? You're muted.
I'm here.
Okay, and Mayor Kerr?
Here. All right, so everyone's in the house. Mike Fitzsimmons, can I ask you to do the pledge of allegiance?
Lead us.
Did we lose him? Okay, I'll start it. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, this evening, we have Pastor Ronald Britt from the Greater Victory Temple in Seaside. Sir, it's all yours.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Let us pray. Eternal of God, our Father, we beseech you by your great mercy to entreat us this evening as the leader of Delray Oaks come together in this another year you have afforded us to discuss the business and the movement of this great city. Father, in these troubling times that we are living in, in our world, in our nation, in our state, in our communities, we need your grace and we need your mercy to be upon us each and every day. Father, we ask for favor and blessing. It will be upon the mayor, each council member, the city manager, the city attorney, each staff member of the city of Delray Oaks. Bless the police chief and those that are under their leadership. We ask these in our son Jesus Christ's name that you bless set your approval on this meeting and we'll give it back to you in praise. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir.
Thank you all.
It's a pleasure to have you with us.
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
So we're going to move on to public comments. This is the time for any general public comment which deals with matters subject to the jurisdiction of the city and the council that are not on the agenda. Anyone wishing to address this call matters not appearing on the agenda may do so now. The public may comment on any other matter listed on the agenda at the time that matter is being considered. There's a time limit of no more than three minutes. No action will be taken on matters brought up under this item, and all comments will be referred to staff. I'd like to ask everyone to please raise their hand virtually if you would like to be called on for public comments. I don't see any yet. Roberta? Please tell us who you are and where you live.
Hi, my name is Roberta and I live here in Delray Oaks, and I just wanted to publicly acknowledge the proponent of the initiative, my neighbor, Mr. Ravelli, and thank him for putting his name down as the proponent and, you know, leading this, but by no means is he alone. And he's been an upstanding neighbor and person, and I just wanted to acknowledge the fact that he, you know, has put himself out there. And, you know, he's taken potshots from the cephalopods up in the peanut gallery. And I don't appreciate it because I think he's a great guy and he's done nothing but exercise our constitutionally guaranteed rights to the democratic process. And again, I just want to acknowledge his efforts and what a great person he is. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments on items not on the agenda? Karen, can you help me out here?
I don't see any virtual raised hands.
I'm not either. So we're going to close public comment. We're going to move on. And we have some presentations this evening, just in time, stormwater regulations and reporting. Do we have Jeff Condit and Ron Fuji?
Yes, thank you.
Hi, Jeff.
Hello, let me, I'll share my screen. And I'll be co-presenting with Ron Fuji tonight. Can everyone see my screen?
Yes. Yes.
Oh, great. Thank you so much for having me today. I'm very excited to be here. It's great timing with our recent storms. I just wanted to come back and to say hello to the city of Delray Oaks and just give a brief update on stormwater regulations and reporting and the good work we're doing with the city. So as you all know, stormwater is a regulated entity. In 1987, the Clean Water Act was amended and it designated municipal stormwater runoff as a discrete pollution source. Regulations really started getting rolling in 1990 where they started looking at cities over 100,000 population. So for example, the city of Salinas started their MPDES, their National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System program in 1990. And then around 1999, those permitting requirements fell to cities less than 100,000, including the city of Delray Oaks. So my name is Jeff Condit. I'm with the Monterey Regional Stormwater Management Program, and that was developed in 2002 in response to these regulations. So a couple of the highlights of the stormwater permits, some regulations that all our local jurisdictions adhere to. You know, construction site best management practices is a great one. That's really done a lot to stem the flow of pollutants off of construction sites. A lot of times if those sites aren't buttoned up, the sediment will flow directly off those sites and they'll pick up other pollutants along the way, and then that will disturb our waterways and have downstream impacts. So we work closely with building officials and the building inspectors around the region and ensure that all of our construction sites are adhering to best management practices. Another area of highlight is municipal good housekeeping. So I work really close to the Ron Fuji to ensure that the city of Delray Oaks is adhering to good housekeeping practices and really leading by example in our communities and ensuring that our courtyard's are ensuring water quality practices that are ensuring good management of our water resources. Another area where I focus traditionally is public education outreach. So there are specific requirements to ensure the public understands our stormwater infrastructure and the impacts it can have to our waterways. So as I mentioned, in 2002, the Monterey Regional Stormwater Management Program was created, and that's a partnership, a collaboration amongst the cities on the peninsula and the county of Monterey. So we've got Karma by the Sea, Delray Oaks, Monterey, Pacific Grove, San City, Seaside, and the county Monterey collaborating. We meet the fourth Wednesday of every month. We have Brown Act meetings. It's open to the public. I'm actually based out of Monterey One Water. So pre-COVID times, we would have our meetings at our Ryan Ranch office at Monterey One Water's headquarters there. But now we have Zoom meetings similar to this, and you can go to our montereyc.org website to get more information on those meetings. MontereyC.org is the program website. That stands for the Monterey Stormwater Education Alliance. So that's our education outreach arm for our program. And really, we have this platform for all of the jurisdictions to come together and kind of really just get down to details of these requirements. They're really, you know, lengthy requirements that all of our cities face, all our jurisdictions face, and we provide a platform for our jurisdictions to work together and cost-effectively and consistently respond to the permit requirements across our region so that we limit confusion and ensure that we're being cost-effective as well. So some of the highlights for the Mr. Swift program, Mr. Swift as we're known, we have really pushed our single biggest intervention that really helped the general populace understand that to make that connection, that our storm drains flow directly to our waterways. So we were required to post those storm drain emblems on all of our inlets throughout the region that just alerts members of the public that, you know, this infrastructure flows directly to our waterways and to really think about what goes into our storm drain. So we've had a concerted effort to raise awareness in our community about that fact and really try to drive that home. And we've seen through another program, we have our first flush monitoring program. We just held the first flush event on this past Sunday when we had that big deluge of rainwater that hit our region. When it triggers a certain threshold, we have volunteers throughout the region that are looking at outfalls. We actually look at outfalls that are discharging directly to the bay. We get that first flush monitoring event, so we have an idea of the types of particulates and pollutants that are entering our waterways from that first flush event. So we've got great data that spans 20 years, and we've actually seen decreases in pollution and pollutants in our waterways from pre to post permit. So we're seeing improvements in our discharges, which is a great thing that we can report back to the state. And so that's all done by volunteers throughout the region. So we're really thankful to our volunteers and our partners, NOAA. We work closely with them to run that program. We also do education throughout the region where we're in the schools, educating our schoolchildren. We work with the construction industry and alert them to best manager practices, and we do free trainings. We partner with stakeholders of the region to beach cleanups, that type of thing. So it's a pretty comprehensive program. We've been in it for 20, we're entering our 20th year of collaboration. So really proud of that fact. So it's been a really positive thing, and our results from our water sampling is showing progress. So we're really excited about that. An area I really wanted to focus on today is the Delray Oaks Butterfly Garden. This was one of our efforts to raise awareness of best management practices in the garden. And so we were able to partner with Delray Oaks Sustainable Delray Oaks and provided a small grant to them to help them with the purchase of the boxes and plants and pollinators species. And it was a really great community-led effort. I give many props to Sustainable Delray Oaks for all that they did to turn that space into a flourishing habitat garden. And really, our goal is to raise awareness focusing on the iconic endangered monarch butterfly species and trying to promote ways that we in our home gardens can limit pesticides, limit fertilizers, and help to plant pollinator species that will help this threatened species. So great props to Sustainable Delray Oaks, and we were thrilled that we were able to partner on this project. So that was something we did locally. And then I can turn it over, Ron. You know, he's done a great job limiting and completely reducing and eradicating the pesticide use for the city of Delray Oaks and following best management practices. That's part of our permit requirement as well. So, you know, anything that, Ron, if you want to step in and kind of mention some of the work you've been doing?
Sure. First and foremost, I want to thank Jeff for coming on tonight and also his help with me getting acclimated into the permit process. He came over a couple of times and helped me work through my first challenge with the permit, which is a lot in there. But thank you so much, Jeff, for all your help. And to go back to the pesticides and herbicides and stuff like that that were here prior to me being here, we cleaned all that stuff out. We went to more a low-flow sprinkler head. They're a little more costly, but it eliminates the runoff into the creek, which everybody knows is right next to the park. So that's super, super important. And then getting rid of like Roundup and different types of chemicals. There was chemicals there that didn't even have tags on them, so we cleaned house and took all that stuff to Marina Dump and got rid of that. And then went to a more organic type fertilizer and stuff that we use for the grass, which super stoked over. And again, the importance of this program speaks volumes to the fact that, you know, our waterways and our ocean are for us, you know, and our environment, it's very important to keep that stuff clean. So I'm stoked to be a part of this, and I'm glad that we're able to be more self-sustainable and take over our responsibilities. And previously, we had Scott Ottomeyer, who was doing all this for us. So we've taken it over and we're growing up now. So it's a great, great opportunity. And again, Karen for giving me all the information I needed and Jeff for helping me out so much. I appreciate it.
And there's, as Ron mentioned, there's so much that's being done behind the scenes with, you know, the courtyard and ensuring that best management practices are being followed and assessments are being done. And we're really doing our best to protect water quality throughout the region. So it's really a collaborative partnership amongst all the jurisdictions in our region to ensure we're protecting water quality, and we're seeing results. So that's really exciting. So I'm happy to report that on October 15th, we have our annual report due. So I worked closely with Ron and Karen on this, and we were successful in submitting the report. City Manager Gerton was able to certify that, and that goes to the state water board. And so now the regional board will be reviewing that report as they do every year. And they'll let us know if they see any issues or anything of that nature. But it was a successful process, and so thanks to Ron for all his efforts. And so, great job to all. So I just want to say thank you. This is my email address, jeff@myonewater.org. As I mentioned, my website is, our website is montereycsea.org where you can find more additional information about the program and everything we're up to in the region. And we'd love to have public participation in our program and any feedback, we definitely welcome. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, Jeff and Ron. Good timing. Thank you for eliminating the pesticides. That makes us all healthier. And the Butterfly Garden has been a really nice success. So thank you, Jeff, for partnering with us on that. So on that note, any council member have any questions? Let's start with Pat. Pat, you're muted. There you go.
I'd like to thank Ron and Jeff for all the good work they're doing. It's not only enhances Delray Oaks, but the entire Monterey Peninsula. And thank you again for your help.
Okay, Mr. Gagliotti?
I just want to echo what Pat said. Thank you, Ron, and thank you, Jeff. It was a very interesting, interesting presentation. I had no idea that all that was going on.
Mr. Donaldson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I don't have any questions, but Jeff, thank you for everything you've done for the city and partnering with us to make those exceptional things happen. And Ron, you're a superhero, man. I'll tell you what, we're blessed to have you, and thanks for everything that you do.
Ms. Shirley?
Yes. Thank you, Jeff, for your presentation and Sustainable Delray Oaks loved doing the project with you and getting that grant for the Butterfly Garden. So that's been a really special thing for us, but really happy to share that with the city. And Ron, I love your enthusiasm for joining in on this and helping. I love it. So thank you for taking that sustainable approach. Again, you're making all of us healthier, and I appreciate it. And Jeff, I know we have some other regulations coming down the road in terms of trash and stormwater. And so, you know, we'll be interested in talking more about that later, but it's great to get this update. So thank you.
Okay, let's go out to the public. Are there any public comments about the presentation? I see no hands, Karen.
I don't see any.
Okay, so I'll bring it back with the last thank you for all the hard work and looking forward to whatever is coming next. Hopefully, a lot of rain and a lot of stormwater, a lot of good stormwater. So thank you, gentlemen. Our next presentation is the Air District Electric Vehicle Incentive Program by Richard Stedman. I'm going to turn it over to you.
Great. Thank you, Mayor Kerr and city council members. Actually, by my background right now, I just should note that I'm not in Hawaii. I'm actually in a hotel room in Sacramento, so I'm not even in Monterey, where it rained here pretty heavily yesterday. So yeah, I've come to you tonight to give you a little update on what's going on with your air district, which is the Monterey Bay Air Resources District. And I'm Richard Stedman, the Air Pollution Control Officer. Just a little bit about our agency. It's a three-county agency. That's Monterey, Santa Cruz, and San Benito counties. We have about 35 employees, and we have an 11-member Board of Directors made up of elected officials throughout our three-county regions, including county and cities. And we have about an annual budget of about $22 million, much of that being grant monies that we pass through. The district is responsible for air monitoring, permitting, long-range planning, enforcement, regulatory development, education, public outreach, all related to air pollution as required by state, federal, and local laws and regulations. Next slide, please. Okay, great. So we have two components. Typically, our district does not regulate emissions from motor vehicles. We deal with what's called stationary sources of air pollution. And those are things that are bolted to the ground, such as power plants, gas stations, auto body shop, that type of thing. But we do get involved where we can because transportation-related emissions account for about 70% of the air pollution in our three-county jurisdiction. So even though we're really taking our pound of flesh, as it were, out of stationary sources, we realize that much of the heavy lifting is in the transportation sector, and that's usually performed under the California Air Resources Board where they set emission standards, which is unique throughout the country because we have a waiver from Clean Air Act that allows us to do so. Well, it's a little more complicated since the previous administration, but currently, we're trying to get that back. And we lead the nation in clean air efforts with greening up our fleet and reducing emissions and advanced technologies. So where we can is we concentrate on trying to reduce emissions from these vehicles to actually improve air quality. And we've seen a steady reduction in emissions over the past decades because of advancements in technology for emissions control on vehicles. And even though we have more people driving, more vehicle miles traveled, we've seen reductions in the overall pollution attributed to those mobile sources. And so within our jurisdiction, we have two programs that we get at those emission reductions. And one is the EMBR, Electric Vehicle Incentive Program, or EVIP. And the next one is the Plug-in Monterey Bay Infrastructure Program, or PMB, as we like to call it. Next slide, please. So program funding, where does this money come from? So every time you register your vehicle, which is annually, we get $4 that actually is collected by the Department of Motor Vehicles, and then they eventually get around to sending it to us. And so that accounts for where we get a lion's share of our funding. And for the Plug-in Monterey Bay, there's also an additional $2 local fee under AB 923 that we're allowed to collect during the registration process. So that's where we get our money to operate these programs. Next slide, please. So just to give you a little bit of history on our electric vehicle incentive program. We started in 2016, and we've obligated about $2 million for this program. It's averaged about $400,000 annually. And as I said, we have Santa Cruz, Monterey, and San Benito County residents are eligible to apply. And I'm really proud of this fact. To date, we've incentivized the purchase or lease of over 1,300 vehicles. So that's pretty monumental. It's a drop in the bucket with where we need to go, especially if you look at the ambitious goals of the California Resources Board and Governor Newsom, where the goal is to get every vehicle electrified for sale in 2035. Next slide, please. Okay, so let's be out of order here. So this gives a look at how many vehicles we've incentivized since inception. So as you can see, first year, only 177, 257, 300, and then we had a high-water market, 380 vehicles, 383. And then last year was 243. And you may wonder what's going on. Well, the incentive amounts have changed every year, and we've been trying to find the sweet spot with respect to how much of an incentive to give to the public. And this was the first time we've ever gone out to the public with incentive monies. Most of our AB 2766 money was used to grant projects, or fund grant projects for cities and counties and other governmental agencies. So this was a monumental undertaking to give away money. It takes a lot. This is a fully automated program. Now, we've designed a database that accepts applications. We work with the Central Coast Energy Services to evaluate people based on income needs, and that is important in this project, as I'll describe later. So we've been playing with the numbers. It's ranged from 1,000 up to 2,000 and then back down to 1,500. And currently, we're right around $2,000 per vehicle, but it depends on the vehicle type. And I'll talk a little bit more about that. Next slide, please. So this is a photograph actually of employees who have purchased or leased electric vehicles at the district. And I want to also point out that one thing that's not in this photo is motorcycles. We also incentivize the purchase of electric motorcycles. And for the first time this year, we've started incentivizing the purchase of electric bicycles. And this is an important project that gets folks on the road, out of their cars, in a bicycle. This year, we started, we set aside $50,000, and we're opening it up to only low-income qualified individuals so that to go through Central Coast Energy Services to get that determination. And there's $1,000 per bicycle available. And you have to buy a bicycle that's between $1,000 and $4,000. Folks may wonder, why do we have a limit on both ends there? And we want to make sure folks are buying a bike that can be repaired. It doesn't come in a box where they have to assemble at home and and hope for well intentions down the road when the thing breaks down. So we're working with local bike shops to get the word out and have folks buy bikes within local bike shops throughout our three counties. So we'll see how this goes. We've had a lot of interest. Of course, the bicycle managers have shown us a lot of love too, so that's always good to get nice comments. But we're hoping to get people on the road into electric vehicles. Just to go over some of the amounts, so $2,000 is available for a hydrogen, which we don't have a vehicle pictured there. There's not a lot of hydrogen fuel available currently. We're looking into trying to install a hydrogen fueling We're looking into trying to install a hydrogen fueling facility, but that has a lot of strings attached to it with respect to land use. And hydrogen, as you know, is very explosive and that sort of thing. But currently, with our program, you can get fifteen hundred dollars for a battery electric vehicle, seven hundred and fifty dollars for a plug-in hybrid, and three hundred dollars for a motorcycle. And if you're low-income qualified, you can double all of those amounts. So we recognize that folks, this is sort of an elite thing, the pioneers like computers, the folks that can afford to buy, you know, very expensive electric vehicles are doing so. We want to incentivize folks without that necessary means because the operational cost of electric vehicles significantly less than a gas-powered vehicle. So it makes sense for low-income folks to be driving these. We're working, as I'll talk about next, on our infrastructure to make sure that they can be charged and filled up. But the other component of this program, which is sort of unique, is that we're actually also giving up to a thousand dollars for a used electric vehicle. And that's one of the first I've heard of in the state and throughout the country. We're seeing a lot of turnover in fleet. People are trading in their used vehicles. And you can get into a leaf for, Leaf, an Nissan Leaf, for instance, for around eight thousand dollars. So there's a good supply of used vehicles available now. I want to get folks into that market as well. So it's not just about giving money away, it's about making real changes in our fleet. Okay, next slide, please. Okay, so this is going to talk about our Plug-in Monterey Bay Electric Vehicle Infrastructure Program. So this was designed as a five-year program, and we've been spending around a hundred, one-point-two million dollars each year. We went through a competitive bid process and selected two installers for charging stations. One of those is named Ricardo and the other one is ChargePoint. And since the 2017-18, we've almost put in five million dollars to install thirty-five Level Two locations. That's seventy-seven charge stations or ports or nozzles, if you want to do the gas equivalent, and fourteen direct charge, fast charge locations, or direct current, fast charge locations, which turns into thirty-five charge ports. Next slide, please. Okay, so we went operational November 2018 at our Prun Dale Direct Charge Fast Charge, a Direct Current Fast Charge Complex. And this was an eight-hundred-and-seventy-thousand, seventy-thousand-dollar project. It was one of the first high-power, two-hundred kilowatt DC FCH stations in California and one of the first stations with battery storage capacity. So it's got a wall of Tesla power packs. And this is off of the Prun Dale Shopping Center near the 101 interchange. And you can see, we collect data on this, and we've had over twenty-two hundred plug-in events. And we've just benched over thirty-seven thousand kilowatt-hours of electricity. So it's a pretty popular place to get fueled up. And I've got some pictures, so the next slide, hopefully, we'll have that. My slides are too out of order here. So next slide, please. So this shows in the center the finished or complete bank of charging stations. And note that each station has two charges so that folks can double up on those. And then behind those devices or structures behind the charging stations are the battery packs designed and built by Tesla. So we're really proud of this. People can come into the shopping center and leave their vehicle to charge and do some shopping and come back and have their vehicles filled up. So it's a really nice way to go. We've done a lot of studies with respect to where charging stations should be situated in our three counties. But to tell you the truth, it doesn't really matter where they should be situated right now. Our whole primary intent and focus is on getting charging stations where they can be put in in their shovel-ready projects. It's nice to have a list of priorities, but if you can't get it built because land use decisions, there's, you know, trenching that has to be done, a lot of utility work. A lot of these are ready to go, and we want to fund those just to get the numbers out there. So, you know, it's interesting, there was an article in the Herald a few weeks back, and I got sort of sensitive about it because it didn't really mention all the work that the air district has done. It mentioned some of the work that other districts have gotten grants, like the Three CE. They have not broken ground on one single charging station yet, and we put a lot in. So that's one of the reasons that I've been sort of going on the speaking tour, letting folks know what we're doing and continue to do and will continue to do in the near future. Okay, next slide, please. Okay, I guess it's a double, so more of the same. Next slide. Okay, the next, this is, I call this the crown jewel of achievement in our portfolio because this was an incredible project because, number one, we had to work with Caltrans. And anybody that's worked with Caltrans, I used to work for Caltrans, so I'm not going to disparage them, but they typically do not allow anything in their rest stops as far as vending or anything like that. And we were able to get Caltrans to agree to have us install a DC FC station in the Camp Roberts rest stations on both sides of the highway. And what's so special about this is it's actually one of the first solar-powered charging stations in California and the US offering free charging to the public. And we saw this as one of those killing two birds with one stone because they were ready to go. We didn't have to do any trenching. And once we negotiated with Caltrans and they wanted to come onboard, that was great. And this is a device that's constructed, and I've got some pictures of it, but they unload it from a skid and it just sets up, and you don't have to do anything. So there's no trenching, there's no construction, it's all done before it's delivered to the site. So you can see, we've had a lot of plug-in events. And this also, the second most advantageous feature is this sort of bridges the gap between South County and San Luis Obispo County. That's sort of a desert there, the Camp Roberts area and so forth. So if you're driving a vehicle, it really was challenging to have a vehicle that would make the distance. So we encourage people to stop and fuel up as much as they can, as long as there's not a line or anything. But it's sort of an oasis in the desert of electrons out there. So we're really pleased to have this. And this is being used as a model for other installations throughout the state and the nation. Next slide. So this shows where the actual device is constructed. Starting the top, you can see it's got a canopy, which is actually the solar panel. And then in the lower right-hand corner, you can see it being deployed. So you just charge, drive your car up into the charge station there and plug in. Next slide. So this is at Camp Roberts, and it's a nice, we've got the charging panels there. And then you can fill up, there's two nozzles there to accommodate two vehicles. And it's, we've actually gone one step further. We've got a trickle charge. We didn't have a lot of electricity. We now actually have it connected, just to make sure we're always full there. Yeah, because solar panel, if it's, especially now that we're getting into the winter months with less sunlight and cloudy days, we want to make sure it's always charged. So it does have some connection now to the grid, but it can be a standalone device. Anybody that wants to install one of these, it's made by Envision Solar, and it's a great product. Next slide, please. That's a nighttime slide, so we're not getting anything from the sun, but it's got enough power and reserve to be able to charge that vehicle. Next slide. So we not only install these DC fast chargers in Monterey County, but we were also installing them in Santa Cruz and Hollister, King City, Monterey. And any, like I said, anybody that's interested, please contact us. And we can talk to you about getting you in line. This program is pretty well oversubscribed, so, you know, but if we see something that's ready to go, and we can, in many cases, move you to the front of the line. Next slide. So these are Level Two. So just to emphasize, too, we have fourteen total DC fast charging stations. Now, we're over thirty-five with seventy-seven charging points, ports for the Level Two. So Level Two is a lot slower, but it's a lot easier to install. And the electricity is not as hot, not as many, as much current. So this is a way to go if you want to do it simple. But certainly, the DC fast chargers are more advantageous because they can quickly charge a vehicle in less than half the time. Next slide. So that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you, Richard. Very fascinating. I would like to start with the council, Ms. Lynn Tell.
Thank you, Richard, for an outstanding presentation. It was very informative. I didn't realize that there had been so much advancement going on. And I really liked the idea of the incentive program for electric bicycles. I think that is a real positive move. And thanks again for your excellent presentation.
Thank you.
Mr. Gad Gliotti.
Well, thank you, Richard. That was fascinating, fascinating. I'm in my fourth electric car now. And in the last two, we actually took advantage of the incentive program, so it was really great. I appreciate that. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Mr. Donaldson.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And Richard, thank you for the presentation. I don't have any questions, but it was great information.
Ms. Shirley.
Yeah, thank you, Richard, for coming and sharing this information. I have seen those chargers down at Camp Roberts. I haven't stopped, but I'm happy they're there on our trips down to Southern California. So, yeah, I really hope that we can look towards getting some chargers in Delray Oaks. I would love that. So thanks for providing this information.
The one thing I would add is that in addition to those services for the vehicles to the public and the infrastructure, we also have been working with various cities and counties on fleet changeover. So if you have an old, dirty vehicle that you want to replace, please contact us. There was a time where we were actually giving up to twenty-seven thousand dollars per vehicle to change out to an electric. That's, number has decreased down to about ten thousand. Just once again, trying to find that sweet spot where we can maximize the benefit and have more money to give to other folks that need the change over their fleets.
Richard, do you, are those applicable for police cars?
They could be, especially if it's a really dirty vehicle. And by that, I mean, especially if it's diesel. I mean, we're really about getting diesel up, but most police cars are not diesel. But if it's a really high-mileage one, we'll be able to work with you on that. Typically, what we've been doing lately with our AB 2766 grant program is we, for a number of cities, including Santa Cruz and Monterey, we've changed out some of the waste trucks. So the garbage vehicles now are electric. And those are about four hundred thousand dollars a pop. So they are pretty pricey, but they get, they actually qualify for our cost-effectiveness with respect to reducing cost per ton. And so we've been, you know, unfortunately, we don't have a lot of money for four hundred thousand dollars. Typically, for that program, we have about one-point-six million dollars a year to give out. But that's in addition to this program that I, these programs I just talked about. So always look, we give workshops every year around March. And we try to notice all the cities that, to come and present an application. And it's very competitive, but there's some money available for fleet changeouts and vehicle changeouts. So if you've got an old truck or something, you want a water tender, fire trucks, we work with those, too. So, yeah, if you've got something, please let us know. We can see if you're going to qualify.
Great. Let's go out to the public. Any comments, any public comment?
I'm not seeing any hands, Mayor.
I am not either, so I'm going to come back. And Mike, we would love to be on your preferred map for anything coming up. But in the meantime, thank you for the work you're doing and for coming and sharing it with us. Our presentations tonight are about keeping our air and our water healthy. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So let's move on to the consent agenda. Does anyone on the council want to pull any item for consideration?
Mayor?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I'd like to pull C3 and C4. I just have a comment, a question on those.
Okay. Anyone else on the council want to pull anything? Not C?
Mayor, it's Scott. I wanted to pull the same two items.
Okay. So let's go to the public. Anyone want to pull any item off of the consent agenda? Okay, so let's come back. And what I'd like to do is start with Ms. Shirley because she went first. Please, go ahead.
Just, well, do you want to start on just C3 first, and we can both talk about?
Go ahead.
Okay. So on the accessory dwelling unit ordinance, I'm comfortable with passing it. But last time, during the first reading, I had talked or asked about green building codes and moving forward with that. And so I guess it's a question for our city manager and probably for Alex Lurka as well. In terms of green building codes, I know it's a much larger conversation we need to have. But if we wanted to move towards providing some of those guidelines in our ordinance, does that, do those green building codes go into our ordinance? Or is that something that we do separately, just establishing green building codes in the city? And then do we do an amendment on that for the ADU if we want to implement those into that ordinance?
The mayor, if I might, the green building code is something that we can adopt by reference. And to the extent they live somewhere in the building code, we can require that in a short, sweet amendment to our current ADU ordinance and just sort of incorporate those by reference and require a certain provisions or all of the green building codes.
So it's not something we would do now?
No, that would have to go for, you know, first reading and a second reading.
Okay, okay. Okay. Well, I just want, let the council know that I'm interested in moving in that direction if we can. I'd really like to see our ADUs electrified and mandate solar and certainly that they're well insulated. I think these are important steps to move towards when we look at new buildings. And so I, you know, if we can have that larger conversation another time. Again, I'm supportive of this ordinance, but I'd like to see us move towards that in the future.
So if you don't mind, I'm going to go to Mr. Donaldson for him to talk about the same topic.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I also have no opposition to the second reading. But what I wanted to do was request a future agenda item where we can discuss the notification process for ADUs. You know, oftentimes, residents don't really find out about an ADU until they hear the sound of saws and hammers from their neighbor's backyard. And I realize that ADUs go through the administrative approval process, and that's different than what your traditional remodel would do, going through the planning commission. But I think it's important that the residents be at least informed before construction actually starts. So I was hoping that maybe down the road, we could take a look at that notification process.
Alex, could you talk about any requirements or non-re requirements currently at the state level, perhaps?
The state level and the state preemption largely Yeah, the state level and the state preemption largely focuses on, you know, what can be built and where and, and what restrictions, uh, building and planning and zoning there are. The noticing is something that, that the city would have the discretion to go above and beyond on and, and if it was the pleasure of the council, um, the city manager and I could, could research that specifically, what we could do. I'm thinking something along the lines of sort of, you know, the posting that you would do for a construction of a single-family residence, something like that, um, something we could look at.
Okay, thank you. Um, let's go to item C four, the sign ordinance, Ms. Shirley.
Yes, I just, I needed, personally needed clarification today, and so I thought I'd publicly make that clarification for everyone else too. Um, I was really stuck on the four feet that, um, signs looking at, you know, posting your sign four feet from the curb. And, you know, that, that's okay. It needs to be more than four feet, right? Because less than four feet would be within the city and, you know, public, public right of way. Um, and in the ordinance, it's five feet, but that's from the asphalt. So if you're measuring from the road, it's five feet, your sign needs to be, um, greater than five feet. Or, or if it's, if you're measuring, I guess, you know, again, with the staff report, it says next to the curb, it would be four feet. But, um, so I needed clarification for that, um, that the ordinance actually says five feet and that's because it measures from the asphalt. So I thought I'd just restate that for everyone.
Okay, uh, John, did you have something?
Yeah, that's an important point. Uh, and just to clarify, council member Shirley is saying, uh, because we talked about this extensively, Kim, is this, is this kind of that, we, we gave everybody a five foot basically because it was so difficult. The, the right of ways is, is, is many widths. Um, what you're clarifying is that all, uh, all setbacks are all from the, from the asphalt and they are all five feet, correct?
That's correct, yeah, for, for signs, yes.
Perfect, okay.
Yeah.
And, and that's what the ordinance actually says.
Yeah, the staff report, yeah, the staff report mentions four feet, but it says from the curb.
Now I understand, now you're right, okay, yeah, I was confused, got it now, thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, Mr. Donaldson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just, also, I don't oppose the, the second reading. I just wanted to make a point and that was the, during the first me, uh, reading of the ordinance, I had pointed out some edits and, and ultimately they weren't corrected by the sign committee. And I just wanted to say that, you know, when we form these committees, we have the responsibility, uh, whether you're, uh, part of the council or part of that committee, to see that, that project through to the final product and not rely on staff to come in and, and have to do additional work on it. Uh, they, they definitely got enough on their plate and I just wanted to make that point, that that's, that's part of our responsibility. Thank you.
Were, uh, were those edits that you made last month?
They were edits that I suggested during the first reading and when the
Last month?
Correct. And when the packet came out, those edits hadn't been made in the ordinance. They subsequently have. I, I notified staff and those corrections were, were in fact made. It's just a matter of, you know, making sure that we have that responsibility to see it through. And in this case, it's the sign committee. Um, they have that responsibility to make sure that that final product has everything in it and, and, uh, you know, not only any suggestions, but any edits and clarifications that need to be made.
So ju- just a, a point of clarity, the sign committee, once they turned over, um, they have not worked on it. So that was staff. So I want to thank the staff for all the work that they, they have done. And, um, and thank you for, uh, clarifying, uh, things that were, um, not included.
Yeah, my, my, sorry. Go ahead, city manager.
No, no, go ahead, Scott.
No, it's just my point is the sign committee had the responsibility of creating that ordinance. And therefore it needs to be completed by the sign, uh, ordinance committee and making sure that it goes to, you know, the, the final product. That, that's my whole point. That, that's the responsibility of those committees.
Mr. Gerton, did you have anything to say?
I did. So, so, uh, considering that this is the second hearing, I just wanted to clarify um, that there was a version control issue, uh, with what got put into the initial, uh, packet that you all had before you. Um, but, uh, as council member Donaldson pointed out, he, he notified us of that. So we got the corrected version in there. The corrected version that's currently in there for the second reading matches what you all approved and moved forward at the last meeting. So nothing has changed. There was just some cleanup and some mix-up that needed to happen.
Thank you. So what I'd like to do is go out, John, I see your hand up. Um, I want to see if there's any other, um, points of conversation from the council. So, Mr. Gagliotti?
Yeah, I just wanted, um, I guess, uh, comment to Scott's comment. And that was that, that the sign committee did do the work and they did actually draft. Um, but, uh, and they, and they did it in both red line in a, in a, in a, a clean version. But, um, none of us were municipal attorneys or, or municipal counsel. And so it still had to go through that, that safety check. Um, and that's where I think a lot of the staff work was done, was one, uh, in just, you know, making sure that, that, that everything that we put in there, um, could be legally put in there. And then two, it, there, there's a formatting that, um, that we weren't, you know, we, we didn't, we didn't know. And so that was the other thing that, that staff did. So I, I mean, I understand, I understand what, what it was caused, w- w- you know, what you're saying. Uh, and I, and I know why, why you're saying it. But, um, I also want to say is that, you know, as a member of that sign committee, we, we did do, we did do all the writing and, and the draft that we submitted to staff was, you know, was the final product. We did the research, we put the content in, we put the, you know, the, the punctuations. But there was a formatting and kind of municipal liability check that needed, it needed to go through.
Mayor, if I might, add a little bit, um, I, I appreciate what council member Donaldson and council, council member Gagliotti are talking about. I think I can clarify a little bit where some of the problem came in is that, you know, because we're a small city, because we have a small staff, um, uh, you know, there's a, uh, uh, I guess it's a longstanding policy of citizens helping out and council members helping out, planning commission helping out, uh, to help move some of the staff work forward. Um, and, and we appreciate that and we love working with the committees and we love the volunteerism in the city and all of that. It's great. Um, I think where, where we had troubles with this is without having somebody from staff working with the committee all the way through the process, um, then we get some difficulty of staff then getting back into the process and understanding all of the steps that went, that the committee went through and, and all the thought process and the different versions, like in something big like this, an ordinance goes through several different iterations and who, who's controlling the version control. And so it, it just made things a little more difficult for us from a staff perspective of keeping track of what version was the latest version. I'll talk more about this later when we get to my city manager report because I have something to this, that I think is going to help for the future. Um, but I, I think that's what council member Donaldson was trying to get at is that, you know, more staff involvement with the committee process and, uh, and, uh, being sensitive to staff time and the workload that we all have. It, it is great. And, and I think this is a really good discussion for us to be having.
Great. Uh, Ms. Lynn Tell, any comments on either item?
No, I have none. Uh, I would also like to make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
So I, I need to go back and just make sure with, uh, council people Shirley and Donaldson that you're okay to move forward. I mean, there were no changes requested?
Yeah, I'm fine. I, I just want to comment real quick. I want to echo what, um, council member Gagliotti said, that we, we did do all the work. And I would also argue that if we were to go back, um, as a committee and make those small edits, that it would probably even take more staff time to prepare the agenda to put it out to the public so that we all can meet and get it done. Sometimes I think the, um, efficiency is, is better with, uh, with staff to just go in and do a few edits. So, um, I'm happy it's done. Thank you for, for doing those. And I'm, I'm excited to, to implement it and vote for it tonight. So, thanks.
Okay, so we have a, uh, motion for approval to include C three and four as is.
I'll second it.
Okay, John will second. Um, Karen, can you please do a roll call vote?
Should we, um, do we, to the mayor or should we send it out, um, should we send it out to public for comment or?
Oh, excuse me, yes. Um, sorry, let's go out to the public. Uh, anybody have any, um, comments on either of these two items? Not seeing any. I'll bring it back for the vote. Karen?
Council member Shirley?
Aye.
Council member Donaldson?
Aye.
Council member Gagliotti?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lintel?
Aye.
Mayor Kerr?
Aye. So it, the consent agenda passes unanimously. I, um, also want to give big thanks to the sign committee, um, which included residents as well as council and planning commissioners. It was a, um, it was a big undertaking and, um, I think we did good. So, um, on that note, we're going to move on to old business of which there is none and new business, number one is
Excuse me, Mayor?
Yeah.
Did you act on the rest of the consent agenda?
We did it, we did it inclusive.
Okay, so that, okay.
It was the entire consent agenda because no edits were made.
The motion was for the entire, uh, consent agenda. Okay, thank you, sorry.
Yeah, there was nothing to change on the, uh, either two items. Um, so back to new business, eight, one, consider SB thirteen eighty-three compliance and shared cost MOU with Monterey Regional Waste Management District and its members. I'd like to turn it over to Jeff Hoine.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council, City Manager Gerton. This next item is, uh, consideration of, uh, MOU between the Monterey Regional Waste Management District, its members, uh, member agencies, including the city of Delray Oaks for services related to the, uh, handling of organic waste as mandated under SB thirteen eighty-three. It's twenty, uh, twenty sixteen legislation that is still being implemented on a five-year timeline. Uh, there are many, uh, different mandated reporting, compliance and legislative requirements. Legislative meaning municipal code updates and things like that, that stem from thirteen, uh, eighty-three. Uh, this MOU is specifically, uh, related to, um, the compliance and, uh, reporting mandates in that bill. If small jurisdictions were responsible for completing these, uh, requirements on their own, it would be cost prohibitive. So over the last several months through the Waste Management District, uh, Technical Advisory Committee, cities have been working to come up with this, uh, uh, MOU whereby the Waste Management District would be given, uh, responsibility for carrying out these duties. And the cost would be shared by each of the member agencies. So it makes it more, uh, cost friendly to the cities. Some of these, I'll give you a real quick, simple examples. Uh, on the compliance end of things, they call, you may have heard the term lid flipping. So they will contract with the, uh, waste management providers and a, a third-party provider to make sure that residents and businesses are actually complying with what they put in the proper waste bins uh, for the reduction of organic waste. The goal is to reduce organic waste in the waste stream in the state of California by seventy-five percent by twenty-twenty-five. And this is part of that, uh, that, uh, SB thirteen eighty-three requirement that we have to, uh, comply with. The cost for this particular MOU is approximately eighty-four hundred dollars for the city of Delray Oaks in the first year. Some of these costs, uh, have been reduced through a one-time, uh, uh, contribution by the Waste Management District to, to reduce those costs. However, uh, costs should go down in, in the upcoming years because a lot of the requirements will actually have already been implemented and they're, they're one-time things. So we expect at least a slight cost reduction, hopefully. This is just a, one in a series of actions the council will be taking in the next couple of months, uh, related to SB thirteen eighty-three. This MOU is, is the first step. Next, uh, next month, we hope to bring you a model municipal ordinance that's required under the, under the law, uh, for a first reading. And then after that, uh, there will be in December, hopefully, uh, during, uh, for the second reading and then a change in control and amendment to the franchise agreement. So what's going to happen is Green Waste has, uh, requested that there is a change in control. Uh, they are going to be absorbed by a larger company. However, Green Waste will still remain, uh, standalone company, locally held, owned. Uh, and the management should not change. We should be getting the same services and at, uh, the same rates that we agreed to in, in our franchise agreements. Um, right now, the Waste Management District is working with its, um, consultants to make sure that that change in control will not result in any negative impacts to any of the member agencies. And then the franchise agreement amendment will be coming forward with, with that change in control and also, um, a, a few other items related to SB thirteen eighty-three costs in, in our share of it. I'm happy to answer any questions, uh, at this time.
Wonderful, thank you. Um, before I get into the, the council, can you tell me, will there be an increase in, uh, garbage charges for residents?
Uh, I, I would expect that there will be some, uh, slight increases in cost for residents due to this mandated, uh, all the mandated requirements in thirteen eighty-three. That is part of the Waste Management District's negotiations with Green Waste. And that is ongoing and that those costs should be, uh, further clarified when we do get the proposed franchise agreement.
And, and so we're anticipating having that in the beginning of the calendar year or the beginning of the fiscal year next year?
You know, Mayor, I'm not exactly sure. I'd have to look at the agreement to see when, uh, those costs are, are cycled in the franchise agreement. I believe it's calendar year, uh, if I'm not mistaken, because they, they, they want to have these things all approved by January one, uh, not only for the, um, requirements under thirteen eighty-three, but also the, uh, franchise agreement amendment.
So we, but, but tonight, all we're doing is approving the MOU and the cost related to that. And that's eighty-four hundred that the city will pay.
Yes, and that is already budgeted. Uh, it was, uh, it was already budgeted in our last, uh, budget preparation, uh, for this, uh, this fiscal year.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Ms. Lynn Tell, any questions, comments? Pat, you're muted. Pat, we can't hear you. There you go.
Okay. Um, thanks, Jeff, for a nice presentation. Um, I have no questions. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Mr. Gagliotti?
No questions.
Mr. Donaldson?
No, I don't have any questions. I, it's great to see the Regional Waste Management District moving in this direction. And, you know, the share costs I see in there makes sense uh, and is really not outside of anything that other cities are paying on the peninsula.
Okay, Ms. Shirley?
I have no questions. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, so let's go out to the public. Anybody have any questions or comments on, uh, this MOU? Raise your hands now. Don't let the time pass.
I'm not seeing any, Mayor.
I'm not either. Okay, so we're going to bring it back to the council. Um, any, uh, last comments or conversation? Mr. Gagliotti, did you?
No, I know, um, this is an action item, correct? We just need to, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I understand.
Okay.
Uh, Mayor, I'll go ahead and, and move to approve the MOU uh, with the Regional Waste Management District, uh, for the organic waste requirements under SB one-three-eight-three.
I'll second. All right. So, um, any comments, conversations from the council before we vote? Seeing none. Karen, please do a roll call.
Council member Shirley?
Yes.
Council member Donaldson?
Aye.
Council member Gagliotti?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lintel?
Aye.
Mayor Kerr?
Yes, so it passes unanimously. We're moving on to new business, item eight-two. Consider the petition result breakdown for the opposition of the Fortag Trail through the City of Delray Oaks initiative. Consider the petition result breakdown for the opposition of the Fortag Trail through the City of Delray Oaks Initiative. Let's turn this over to City Manager Gerton.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is an item that nobody's heard anything about and it's new and you're all wondering what I'm talking about, right?
Do, do I need to ask for recusals at this point? Okay.
That's a good question, yeah.
So of the council, who will be recusing themselves from this discussion? Ms. Shirley?
Mayor Kerr, yes, my house is within five hundred feet of the trail and so I'm required to recuse.
And Mr. Gagliotti?
Yeah.
Okay, so if you guys can turn off your camera and mute, that would be great. Anybody else? Okay, Mr. Gerton, go ahead.
All right, so on September eighth, the City Clerk's Office received initiative petition titled Opposition to the Fortord Regional Trail and Greenway Project running through the city of Delray Oaks. Upon initial review, we verified that there were four hundred and fifteen signatures. We then submitted that to the County Elections Office for them to certify the signatures for us. They counted until they had a sufficient number of signatures certified. So they let us know that they reached the hundred and twenty-three qualified signatures that were necessary for us to bring this to your council now to certify. We received that from them on September twenty-eighth, which then we were to bring that to our next regularly scheduled council meeting. That's what we're doing today. So we are certifying for you. That's one of the attachments that you have, that there were sufficient number of signatures to take this initiative forward. So that gives your council three options to consider tonight. The first option would be to adopt the measure without change. Excuse me. The second would be to submit the measure to the voters without change. You could do that at a special election or you could opt to do that for the July seventh election. And then the third would be to order what they call a two, a nine-two-one-two report. Nine-two-one-two is the section of the code, the elections code. That report would give staff up to thirty days to return to your body with an analysis of what the implications of the ballot initiative would be. So we would, there's, there's seven items here lifted and listed in the staff report that we could consider. Fiscal impacts, internal consistencies with the general plan, with transportation element, things like that. The effect on land and impact of availability of locating housing, things like that. So there's a whole, a whole list here of things that we would cover in that report. And then there's also an opportunity for the council. If you have any other things that aren't listed in these that you can ask us to come back and report to the council on before you make your decision to go forward with this. So the recommendation is to give staff enough time to analyze all of that. Come back, primarily myself and the city attorney with help from our land use consultants to come back, not with, not, not to change anything, not to change the recommendation, but just to give you all kind of lay of the land and what we think the impacts potentially could be. Before we go forward with this and then at the next council meeting, that's when you would set the election date. So with that, I'm available for questions.
Great. Let's start with questions. Ms. Lintel?
I have no questions, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Donaldson, I guess.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I don't have any questions, but I, I do have something that, that I would like to express. And if you would like me to do that now, that's great, or I can wait.
Generally, the first round is questions and then the second is comments and conversation from the council. Would you mind waiting until we hear from the public?
Yeah, no problem.
Okay, and I have no questions at this time, but I also have some items later. So let's go out to the public. If anybody has anything they would like to say about the petition result breakdown of Fortag, now is the time. And could you all please raise your hand and we'll be able to go through rather than waiting in between? So I see Patrice Vecchioni.
Hi, I'm Patrice Vecchioni. I live on Sausalito. And I would like to address the issue of the distance between council members' homes and the trail as it pertains to who may vote on this issue this evening and in the future. In the September seventh letter from the Fair Political Practices Commission that appears in the agenda for tonight's meeting, it stated that Mayor Kerr is well over five hundred feet and Council Member Lintel doesn't own her, own home, so they both may vote on this issue. Councilmembers Gagliotti and Shirley's homes are within the five hundred feet of the trail, so they should rightly recuse themselves from voting on this matter because of potential conflict of interest. Councilmember Donaldson, however, is not listed among those whose homes are within five hundred feet, and I find that confusing. In looking at the map that follows the FPPC letter in the agenda packet, it appears quite obvious that Mr. Donaldson's home is also within five hundred feet. So it seems to me he also has an obligation to recuse himself. Why is that not indicated in the FPPC's letter? To answer that, we need to know that the FPPC was informed of the distance between council members' homes and the trail simply by the council members stating how far away their homes were from the, the proposed trail. This is hardly an adequate or appropriate way to determine such an important issue. I'd like to recognize that both Mr. Gagliotti and Ms. Shirley have accurately represented the distance between their home and the trail. And what I don't understand is why Mr. Donaldson did not do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I see Ryan.
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, members of the city council, Mayor Kerr, I, I just have a, a couple of comments. I too would like to thank Tom Rabeli for his efforts in the petition drive. I'd also like to correct some assumption, you know, some, some false ideas about how this came about and how it was carried out. And I want to let everybody know, especially residents who may be attending this meeting and sign this petition. The intent was for people to have their voices heard and they felt that they maybe were not having their voices heard on this important issue. At no time were they really lobbied or persuaded to sign in any other way, either yes or no in regards to Fortag. It was merely the idea of something so major, it should be up to a democratic process. And people felt that they should have a voice in this. So I find the idea that it's just a vocal minority and it's just a few cranks who initiated this. I feel like it's really disrespectful to the residents who signed this petition and they signed it in every sector of Delray Oaks on both sides of Highway two eighteen. And that's why I would like to ask the city council not to impede this process any further. And I would like to say that I find it interesting that we would even consider the fiscal impact of having a simple referendum on this issue when we never really discussed the fiscal impact of maintaining this trail over the lifetime of it or the fiscal impact on the city having such a, a trail go through here. And I'd also like to point out that at no time was this petition specifically against a wreck trail. It just has very clear issues with having it go into the Frog Pond and also this idea of having it go through the residential areas of our city and also those people that are uncomfortable with having a tunnel. So to have it portrayed as people that are simply against the idea of a wreck trail is false. And I'd like people that are attending this meeting to, to, to remember that when it comes time to vote. And once again, I'd like to ask that no one impede this democratic process that came up from a grassroots organization and is allowing people to have their voices heard. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Karen Harris?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, city council members, general manager, city manager. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Couple of points. I'm Karen Harris. I live on Rosita Road, backed up to the airport and I've been here for twenty-four years. And I'm the co-chair with Sustainable Delray Oaks. And I wanted to say a couple of things. The first is that when the initiative came, the gentleman came to my door to ask me to, about the petition to sign it, there wasn't any discussion about limiting any future wreck trails in the city. It was simply to, to be able to vote on the wreck trail. So to me, it seemed that it was misleading, at least, at best. Because what's going to happen is any future wreck trail with, according to this initiative, has to go down two eighteen, a very busy highway which Caltrans won't allow, General Jim Moore or South Bounder Road. This is totally against, I think it's going to hinder the city from accomplishing its general planned requirements for connectivity and having pathways throughout our city to eliminate or reduce the automobile trips. So I think that's really important. And I think all the citizens need to know that we shouldn't have to have a, a vote, an election every time we want to put a, a path through our, our city. It's ridiculous. And the second item is, well, basically it was the general plan. I just think that the city has to look at that and that's really important and I don't think this initiative should tie your hands. I think that, that this report, I support having the city look at it and evaluate whether this is something that we should actually do and if it's, I don't even know if it's legal to bind the hands of the city council from doing what it needs to do according to the general plan. Anyway, thank you very much and I appreciate the opportunity to talk.
Thank you, Karen. Amanda Priest?
There, can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Yeah, hi. So, yeah, my name is Amanda Priest. I am the environmental advocate for our local Monterey Autobahn Society whose mission is to protect and conserve bird species and their associated habitats throughout the Monterey Bay region. I just wanted to comment real quick that some of our members had, you know, voiced concerns about the trail alignment in this stretch of the Fortag project as it goes through Frog Pond. And Doctors Watson and Walts came and, and presented to our board and were able to allay all of our, our concerns and the concerns of our members regarding this stretch of the trail. And we really recognize the benefits of this project outweigh the, the negatives. One of the benefits, of course, being making Frog Pond more accessible to everyone. I know many birders who are, who do not feel safe parking along the two eighteen and trying to get into the, the Frog Pond or physically can't get down the stairs anymore either. So creating this trail is really a good way to travel safely through this space. And of course, it's critical for encouraging alternative transportation, thereby helping to reduce our region's carbon footprint. Reducing our carbon footprint has never been more important as we are hearing more scary projections from the UN climate change meetings over in Scotland right now. But you know, regardless of that, climate change that we're experiencing now is the number one threat to birds and us humans. And it's the reason that a lot of us kind of passive bird watching folks end up getting involved here in zoning and transportation issues these days. But I really encourage you, you know, to go ahead and use that section ninety-two twelve reporting opportunity and be really transparent with all of your citizens about the cost and maintenance and everything. You know, the construction itself is, is fully funded, but you could use this opportunity to really think broadly and long-term and reflect on the goals of your general plan and really, you know, work to envision what type of neighborhood and city and world we want to create for all the people that come after us. So supporting this project, I think, really does provide for the health and safety and well-being of all of our residents. So, thank you.
Thank you, Amanda. I'm not seeing any further hands raised. Alexis, you did have a hand raised, but now it's not, is that? Okay, Karen, do you see any hands?
I do not. I did see Alexis, but now she, I don't see it.
Okay, so on that note, I'm going to bring it back to the council and start with Ms. Lintel. Comments?
One question. What is it we're actually voting on tonight?
We're voting on, we have three different options. One is to adopt the ordinance. The second is to submit it to the voters for consideration. Or three, call for a report pursuant to section ninety-two twelve, which is what our city manager is recommending.
Okay, in what order will they be presented to us?
Hello, my hand was raised.
Oh, Alexis, hang on just a second.
Sorry, sorry to interrupt.
We talked about you. So Pat, I'm sorry. In, in what way, I'm sorry, I don't understand your question.
In what order will these be presented to us? We have three options. Which option comes first, second and third? If we're to vote?
The city manager is suggesting that we do option number three, which is the nine-two-one-two, which would, would give us a report that answers all of the questions in the agenda packet. And then we would revisit that report and vote on it in November. Or we do one of the other. There's no order. There's no presentation order. Those are the options we have.
Thank you.
Mr. Donaldson? Oh, I'm sorry, Scott, before we go there, can we hear from Alexis?
Yeah, not a problem.
Sorry, she rotated on. Alexis, please.
Hi, I'm sorry, it's just, I'm walking with my dog, so I'll keep it under two minutes. I didn't have my audio in the right. Technical issues, but anyway, I just wanted to say that I felt that the petition was presented fairly to me and I signed it regardless of my position on the issue because we have had other issues come up in this city in the past where we have had to use this process to revisit things. I would strongly urge that you take the third option recommended by the city manager. And I personally am really excited about the Frog Pond being accessible to disabled people, older people. It's a beautiful space. I've looked at the plans. It's not going to be as dramatic as people fear. And I would really love to see it being accessible to people who can't get to nature because they can't walk or they're in a wheelchair or something like that. That's all.
Okay, thank you, Alexis. So we're back to Mr. Donaldson.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I, I think it's important that I address the question about my ability to participate in this process. And I want folks to know that I've done my due diligence and based on the measurements that have been conducted and the information that's available in the project documents so far, my residence still falls into the category of being five hundred to a thousand feet from the project. And the interpretation from the FPPC that's located in the packet is still valid regarding my participation in this, in the discussions and the decisions. But if there are changes in the future, then I plan to respond accordingly. So I just wanted to, to, to make sure everybody understood that. And then also say that I support the recommendation for a staff report. I think it will help clarify questions that a lot of people are going to have. And although I didn't see it specifically mentioned within the staff report, I'm sure there'll be a legal review to address any potential litigation and liability issues. But with that said, I'd also like to say that the bottom line is the fate of this trail will be decided by the voters of this city. And that's unfortunate because it shows a lack of trust and confidence. And that's unfortunate because it shows a lack of trust and confidence in our city leadership. And it shows that our residents have lost faith in their elected officials to make a decision on this critical issue. We've been debating the benefits and drawbacks of this project for years. But I think it's important to step back and address how we got to this point so we're not doomed to repeat it again. I also feel it's appropriate to defend some of the unfair and untrue things that have been said and written about the people who oppose this project, the majority of which agree with the concept of Fort Tag and care just as much about its objectives as those that support the project. Any portrayal of them as somehow uninformed or misguided or labeling them as NIMBYs is not only inaccurate, it's disrespectful. And it fuels the divisiveness in our small city. When this project was first proposed, their opposition was immediate and clear. And time and time again, those who opposed the project were given hope that their concerns would be heard and addressed. The truth is, our residents never had a choice regarding the route of this trail. To suggest otherwise is disingenuous. The proposed route in Delray Oaks had no real viable alternative. Tamsi's recent presentation dismissing the Highway 218 compromise shows there was never an intention to modify the route. Disregarding the concerns of our citizens and continuously moving the project forward created the irreversible momentum that's led us to this point right now. Although a future segment connecting the Frog Pond to Fort Ord is not part of this current project, they're interconnected. The truth is, if the trail is allowed to go into the Frog Pond, it has to come out somewhere to continue the route into Fort Ord. That means additional construction within the Frog Pond along the backside of houses on Carlton or on the trail that parallels Highway 218. There's no other viable alternative. However, just like when the current segment of this trail was initially proposed, Tamsi is creating a false hope that an alternate route for the Frog Pond section is an option, this time located in the Caltrans easement of Highway 218. It's completely irrational to reject the compromised route down Highway 218 and then say it's feasible on a different part of the highway when the same conditions exist. Plus, routing the trail outside of the Frog Pond goes against the main purpose of Fort Tag, which is to connect parks, not go around them, and was used for another reason to dismiss the Highway 218 compromise. Unlike the trail into the Frog Pond that's connected to the tunnel in this current proposal, decisions regarding future trails will be made by the Regional Parks District, who has jurisdiction and has expressed strong support for the project. Based on this situation, I'm asking Fort Tag and Tamsi to be upfront about the routes and future development in the Frog Pond so we don't have a repeat of our current situation. There have been a lot of great points made by those who support and those that oppose this project. And debates about potential crime, homelessness, property values, impacts to the Frog Pond, and whether or not the trail will be even used won't be fully resolved until something's actually built. And I don't think anybody who's been actively involved with this process is likely to change their mind. So here we are, dealing with a situation created by forces outside of our city with a project that's more of a luxury than a necessity, is yet another issue that divides our city, and I hate to see it happening. The challenge is how we balance citizen concerns with regional desires. And most importantly, which direction the scale should tip. So at this point, the debate is no longer about a trail. It comes down to a regional versus a local issue. In other words, is the regional benefit of this project more important than the concerns of our citizens? And the voters will have that answer. So with that, I'll send it back to you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. I also support having our staff do a 9212 report. We need to have all of the information in front of us as we move forward. And so on that, I have a couple of questions that I would like to be included under Item 8 of the ideas. So I'm ready to launch if somebody wants to take some notes. Alex or Karen?
Yeah, we're ready.
Okay, so the first one, these are questions that I would like to be answered at the report if we choose to go that way. What are the legal nuances involved in creating a law that stipulates actions on two streets we do not own or manage? That's number one. Number two, can we now, or could we, if the initiative is passed, restrict Caltrans and/or the Parks District from building anything such as a tunnel or ADA access to the park? Number three, I would like a definition of what a formal rec trail or rec path is. For example, does creating an ADA path from Villa Verde into Delray Park constitute a path? And I have just a few more. What are anticipated vulnerabilities and liability to the city if Fort Tag were to be voted against by the Delray Oaks voters? For example, would that set the city up for lawsuits limiting our ability to make our city ADA accessible? And there were safety issues identified and laid out in the EIR. What liability would the city assume now that those are out there? And lastly, I think this one is already included, but identify any additional long-term financial implications if the initiative becomes law. So on that, I would like to make a motion to move forward with the city manager's suggestion to do the 9212 report.
Madam Mayor, one of the actions also before you is to formally accept the certificate of sufficiency. So if it's the pleasure of your honor's pleasure to amend the motion to include that action as well.
Okay, so yes, to amend the motion to include the acceptance of the certificate of sufficiency.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, any conversation before we go to a vote?
Do you plan on going back out to the public?
We already went out to the public. So Karen, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Certainly. Councilmember Donaldson?
Aye.
Councilmember Shirley? Oh, sorry. Councilmember Lintel?
Aye.
Mayor Kerr?
Aye. So it passes unanimously. So what that means for everyone in the audience is at our next council meeting, which is on November 16th, which is a week early due to Thanksgiving, we will be given the report and the option to either adopt the measure without change or submit the measure to the voters. Okay, so we're moving on to staff reports. Mr. Gagliotti and Ms. Shirley, you can come back. Please. And we're moving on to staff reports. And let's start with the city manager.
Great, thank you. And bear with me because I seem to be losing my voice. So I'm going to be quick. So as you heard, as you all saw, and this weekend, we had our first major rain event. As you heard from Ron and Jeff, we had what they call the first flush testing. And so Jeff and his crews came out and they tested the water quality from first flush. It's not your toilets. It's the first flush of everything off of the streets and into our drainage system. We did really well with that. That's all related to the great work that you heard about earlier that Ron and our partners are working on. We also had our first Parks and Rec meeting a few weeks ago. That was great. As you all know, we have a sixth grader, right, Mayor? Matthew's a sixth grader? We have a sixth grader who brings a wonderful energy to that committee and great ideas. It was really a pleasure to work with him and with the committee. And we hope to bring some great ideas forward for you all to consider in the near future. Just want to let everybody know that the work on the pathway between work and Portola is scheduled to begin on November 1st. So if everybody can plan their walking routes accordingly, that'll be, the pathway will be closed for one to maybe two weeks depending on the timing and depending on the weather. Right now, it looks like the weather's going to be good, so we're lucky now. I also attended last week our MBEJA, which is our insurance group. Attended, apparently I'm on the Board of Directors, who knew? So I attended the board meeting, getting up to speed on what our role is there. It's with all of the other small cities that we share that responsibility for our self-insurance. It was great to hear from the other city managers, what they're dealing with in terms of keeping workers comp, keeping workers comp under control and other liabilities that we have just in the course of the business that we do, getting some ideas from them. I mentioned earlier about version control and staff work and some of the difficulties that we have in keeping things straight. One of the things that we've been working on, Karen and Randy have been doing great research into this, is looking for an agenda management software system. This is something that came up in our strategic planning workshop and is a goal of ours as set by the council and staff to work on over the next six months. Karen and Randy are making great inroads in that and learning about it. One of the things that that will really help us with, excuse me, is one of the softwares, and Karen will be talking more about this with everybody as we go down the road. But the software systems that we're looking at will provide a more unified structure for how we build our staff reports and how that goes into building our agenda packets and giving us more control over the versions and approval process and who has eyes on different things at which time and are signing off on different things. It'll help Alex in terms of getting to see everything he needs to see in an appropriate time so that he can give us his legal perspective on things. And it'll help with transparency because one of the components will be actually tying our agenda and our agenda packet to the videos afterwards so that when folks want to go back and they want to watch a video, a section of the video that pertains only to one item on the agenda, they don't have to scroll through the entire video trying to figure out at what point in the meeting we talked about that agenda item. They can click on the agenda, which will have a hyperlink, which will take them to that section of the council meeting. So they don't have to scroll through hours of meeting to hear the section that they're interested in. So I think it'll help with our communication with the community. We'll be able to get our agendas out better. We'll have less, fewer times where we have to make corrections on the fly. And I think just in general, it's going to help us provide better, more efficient, more professional services to the community. So we're really excited about that. Same thing for our municipal code update. Karen is also doing great work and working with MuniCode, finding what kind of services we should be getting from them now that we're already currently paying for. And then what services we can get from them to help us with bringing our code up to modern times and in terms of language, in terms of the law, those kinds of things. So we'll be bringing that forward as well. And with that, that's all I have. If there's any questions?
Thank you. I just want to say that the minutes look great. I don't know if everybody realized, but the minutes are in a new format that our city staff also just put into place. So thank you. Next are council reports. The ladies got theirs in. I've noticed that this is the second month without report from Mr. Donaldson and Mr. Gagliotti. I'm wondering if you guys have anything you would like to share with us?
No, I'll get the tac we didn't meet and our water master we haven't met and MST. It's out there. I just haven't submitted the minutes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Donaldson?
Yeah, and for me, we just had a water board meeting last night. So once I have that information, I'll be able to share it with everyone. And then the other events that I attended are already included in there. They were city-related events. So I didn't want to double tap what's already out there.
Okay, thank you. Next item is correspondence. Please, everybody, take a look at the letters. People take time to write us about things. So please take a moment and read those. And our next meeting is Tuesday, November 16th. It's a Tuesday, but it's the third Tuesday rather than the fourth due to the Thanksgiving holiday. We'll be meeting at 6 o'clock. Make sure you put your clocks forward on November, I believe it's November 7th. And with that, we are adjourned. Have a wonderful evening.
Night, everyone.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you.
Thanks, John and Ron and Alex and Karen and Randy.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Have a good evening.